Hey Mary, I see you online. Are you there, Mary?
Yes, I'm here.
Hey, Mary. If you wouldn't mind if you can write in the chat or just let me know. Do you, I understand you wish to speak on one of the cases tonight?
Uh, yes.
Which, which case is that?
Um, I'm, I'd like to speak on be, um, regarding the shipping containers in favor for them.
Oh, okay. And we did discuss that. We, we can do that. Maybe I guess we kind of open up a public. Yeah. Okay. Um, when we proceed in the meeting, we'll find a spot and we can open up public comment. We did discuss this, uh, yesterday during our business meeting. And we can kind of go with, go over some of the comments and, and things that we discussed yesterday. Okay?
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Any person other than the applicant wishing to speak before either committee must fill out a registration slip which can be found outside either of the doors. And you can turn them in here at the desk. Thank you.
Those little things. Yeah, you can take it from the back. Kind of like this. It's just brochures for the clean sweep or whatever, take it to the back. A lot of times all good stuff. Good stuff when it's open. Actually, the ones that say you owe this much money. But they don't. So they called the page out first. To send out spotters. They saw this truck at the station when I drove by. Then I passed three spotters on the way. So two sets.
All right. It is six o'clock and therefore I will call this meeting of the Washtere County Planning Zoning Committee to order. This meeting will begin with a public hearing. Anyone other than the applicant or their representative wishing to speak must register and submit the registration slip to the zoning administrator at this time. Following the hearing, we will conduct our monthly business meeting, at which time we will vote on the applications. You may stay and hear how the applications are decided, or you may leave following the hearing. The applicant and town board will be sent a copy of tonight's decisions. Any other person wishing to receive a copy of a decision can sign the sheet on the table at the front of the room. Those of you wishing immediate knowledge of the outcome of these proceedings may call the county zoning office tomorrow morning. The procedure we will follow for hearing each application is as follows. After each application is read, the applicant, their agent or representative will be asked to present their application. Followed by any questions or comments from the committee. Then all correspondence will be read. Then others in favor will have a chance to speak. Then anyone objecting will have a chance to speak. I will then ask for a summary of the committee's field observations and any staff comments. And finally, the applicant will be allowed a chance for a short rebuttal if they wish. Anyone wishing to speak should use the microphone. They should state their name and direct their comments to the committee. I ask that all testimony be kept brief, no more than five minutes and to the point. If you are testifying as a nearby landowner, please tell us where your property is located relative to the subject property. Tonight's hearing will be recorded and the recording will become part of the record. Comments that are based on hearsay or secondhand information, as well as slanderous or perjudicial remarks will be ruled out of order. The committee has looked at all the properties and the record will reflect these observations. Any person affected by an administrative decision of this committee has 10 days from the filing of tonight's decision to make an appeal to circuit court. The county assumes no liability and makes no warranty as to the legality of any construction commenced prior to the expiration of this 10 day period. I'll now introduce the committee. Patrick King, Robert Waddle, John Van Omegrin. Myself, Dave Bossard, and the zoning administrator Todd Waller, and Becky Hubach, who is the acting secretary. At this point, we'll open the meeting up with public comment from, uh, Mary, if you're on there.
Uh, yes, I'm here.
All right, you may go ahead with your comment.
Okay. Uh, good evening, everyone. Um, I'm Mary Sherman. I live in Washtere County. I'm here to make a statement for allowing shipping containers. Um, I feel that the complete prohibition on shipping containers is far too restrictive. Uh, containers are in common use around the world and are effective and cost efficient means of transport and storage. Uh, they can be very secure, watertight, uh, more animal resistant. And, uh, generally tougher, uh, than sheds of similar size. Uh, they pose no more risk than any other comparable means of storage. Allowing them with restrictions is much more reasonable and fair approach. Um, as to me and my family personally, uh, we are zone agriculture five and we are not near any residentially, uh, zone properties. A 20 foot container would uniquely suit my family's needs. Um, I ask you, uh, the members of zoning board to please consider recommending to the full board that allowing containers be kept on agriculture or commercial properties. Is reasonable and appropriate. And that is all I have.
Thank you, Mary. Um, at this point, I'll have, uh, Todd Waller, the zoning director to, um, review a little bit of what we had discussed at our business meeting yesterday.
Okay.
Hi, Mary, how are you?
I'm good. And yourself?
I'm doing well. So this is a topic that comes up probably every three to four years. Um, you know, the allowance of these storage containers. Um, over the years, they've been to ISOs and I guess ISOs would probably put it, uh, lightly. Um, and that's part of the reason why, you know, the, the county has been very reluctant to date to allow these structures, uh, to, you know, just as standalone. Um, however, we are going to be amending our codes in January. And until then, we're going to be proceeding under policy to allow, uh, storage containers subject to the following conditions. Um, you will have to pull a land use permit. They will have to have a roof installed on top of them. And you will have to replad the exterior of the structure with either metal siding or, you know, vinyl siding or something so that it will disguise the, the view of the actual structure itself. And the doors will have to be re-flatted as well. Um, this is, and this will be allowed in every zoning classification, uh, subject to our accessory structure setbacks. This code, by the way, is very similar to what, what Becca County, just to the north, um, allows for theirs. They do require them to go through conditional use, um, which would be a public hearing. We are not going to do that. We are just going to allow them under the land use. Um, subject to the conditions I just talked about.
Okay. Thank you.
So is that, is that, is that something you think you could live with?
Sure.
Okay. And, you know, if you ever want to come into the office, please come in. You can meet with myself or one of my technicians. And we'll be more than happy to talk about, you know, the exact conditions. Um, we've allowed these. We've been doing this, uh, you know, for probably the past year. Um, and that was the consensus of the committee yesterday. Uh, we'll be formally amending our codes, like I said, in January to incorporate these standards. Um, but until then, we'll, we'll be just proceeding through under policy. Okay?
Okay. Um, when I called, I was told, um, nope, you can't have it. Um, you may want to tell the person that answers the phone about what was spoken about tonight. Cause I just got a no.
And this was just discussed yesterday. So, you know, the policy will be going forward as effective, you know, immediately. So, um, and, and one of my staff personnel is sitting, is sitting here tonight. So, um, we'll make sure that that message gets passed out. Okay?
Great. Thank you so much.
You got it.
All right. With that, then we will, uh, start our public hearing. The first that we have is a zone change. Vern Wagner of Watoma, Wisconsin has made an application for a zone change. In accordance with sections 58 dash 131 through 58 dash 138, 58 dash 451. And 58 dash 661 of the Washtere County zoning code. From CG general commercial to AG general agricultural for an existing single family dwelling. Location is an approximate one acre parcel of land known as lot one of certified survey map 4923. Located in section four township 18 north range 11 east town of Marion. W six four five zero state road 21 is the applicant, their agent or representative present?
Do we want to maybe move this back? I do, I don't see Vern here. Do we want to maybe push this off until the last item and, and just proceed on Washtere?
All right. We'll revisit that after the other two conditional uses have been considered. Next on the agenda is a conditional use application. Ian Campbell of Burling, Wisconsin has made an application for a conditional use. In accordance with section 58 dash 236 paragraph 21 and 58 dash 454 paragraph 30. Of the Washtere County zoning code to conditionally establish a home-based manufacturing machine business in an existing accessory structure. In the AG general agricultural zone. Location is an approximate two and a half acre parcel of land known as lot one of certified survey map 6379. Section 28 township 18 north range 13 east town of Aurora. N seven eight five state road 49 is the applicant, their agent or representative present? Great. If you please come on up and just give us a brief synopsis of what you're doing for this conditional use.
Sure. So I'm just looking to put a well shop inside my pole barn so I can, uh, do some business with some specific clients that I have in Pecana. Is, uh, basically all I'm looking to do.
Okay. All right. Uh, you can, uh, any committee members have any questions? All right. You can have a seat. And if you need to do a rebuttal, we'll give you an opportunity to come back up after we've gone through everything.
Thank you.
Uh, any correspondence?
I have no correspondence and I have nobody registered to speak in favor, objecting, or for information.
All right. And then could we have a summary of the field visit and your staff comments, please?
Everyone should have a copy of the final draft of staff report. Um, property in question is a two and a half acre lot located along the west side of state route 49. Uh, said lot, as we saw, is developed with relatively newer residents, two sheds and a larger pole barn. That larger pole barn was actually permitted in 1996 through a land use permit. Um, an additional land use permit was then pulled in 2024 to create a 46 by 27 heated workshop within that portion of that barn. Um, it's within this space that the applicant now seeks to operate a small, uh, metal fabricating business. And weld business. Now, given the fact that the business will be run out of a detached, uh, accessory structure and welding is involved, commercial building codes may apply. It will be the responsibility of the applicant to contact the building inspector regarding the applicability of commercial building codes. Um, planning and zoning committee conducted their onsite on Wednesday, yesterday, and were generally supportive of the request. The committee cited the fact that the county has always been supportive, excuse me, of home-based businesses, subject to them being compatible with surrounding land uses and compliant with all applicable codes. This site being situated along state route 49 and in a generally undeveloped area should pose no detrimental impact to the adjacent properties. Staff two has reviewed this request and has always been very supportive of home-based businesses. The only concern staff has is with regard to noise that can possibly be generated from these types of operations. As well as noxious fumes from the welding machines. However, as long as the applicant maintains somewhat normal business hours and follows all commercial building codes, if applicable. Um, excessive noise should not be a concern for adjoining neighbors, which are few, and the operation can be run safely. While the committee will be making a recommendation on this request, staff is recommending approval of the conditional use subject to the conditions listed in your report.
All right. Thank you. Would you like to rebut anything? All right. Okay. Then we'll move on to the next application. Mark Dolman of Menominee Falls, Wisconsin has made application for a conditional use in accordance with sections 58 dash 236. Paragraph 17 and 58 dash 454 paragraph 27 of the Washtere County zoning code to store a 1997 Hornet 25 foot travel trailer in the AG general agricultural zone. And the location is an approximate 15 acre parcel of land known as lot one of certified survey map 6730. Section one township 20 north range 10 east town of Rose on Akron Drive. Is the applicant present?
Yeah, right here.
All right. Would you please come up and just give us a synopsis of what you're looking to do there?
So I'm looking for the conditional use permit, um, for this trailer. Uh, I use it 50 to 60 days during the course of the year, uh, you know, primarily for hunting and other recreation. Uh, there is no water hookup to this unit, nor is there any septic. Um, so it's a, you know, basic standalone unit, uh, positioned, you know, uh, far enough away from the road, I believe.
That should do it for now. Any questions from the committee?
I noticed in the thing you have a picture of a toilet outside your trailer.
Okay.
So, yeah, where does that hook up to? Just holding a tank or what?
No, there's no hookup to septic or water.
So where does the waste go from?
Well, you use the, uh, bag units. So you, you pack out everything that is necessary. Nothing was left behind. You know, camping type of situation.
Okay. Any correspondence?
We have no written correspondence and nobody registered to speak.
All right. Then we'll ask for staff comments, please.
Okay. Um, this request comes to us by way of a, a letter of concern, uh, that was written to us back in March of this year for a travel trailer being stored on the property without proper approvals. Uh, as a result, the county notified the applicant for the need to obtain the conditional use. And at present, the applicants are seeking approval to store their camper on their property located along the north side of Akron Drive. Uh, north and west of the intersection of Akron Drive and state route, uh, 22. Um, travel trailer as shown on the plans and is verified out in the field is tripped is 150 feet north of Akron Drive and about 110 feet from the east property line. Staff did visit the property, uh, yesterday to document existing conditions. I've attached a number of photos, uh, in your packet. Just to show the existing conditions. Um, and per the, you know, the attached, um, staff believes that the trailer meets the intent behind our travel trailer storage requirements. For 58 to 26 subsection 17. Uh, staffs reviewed this request and believes that the travel trailer is ideally situated upon the property and will be adequately screened from view. Uh, given the existing vegetation and distance from lot lines and roadway. Uh, while the committee will be making a recommendation on this request, staff is recommending approval subject to conditions listed.
All right. Thank you. Do you feel you need to rebut anything that was said?
No, that sounds good.
All right. Thank you. At this point, I will ask if, uh, the request for a zone change Vern Wagner of Watoma, Wisconsin is an applicant, agent or representative? Present?
I would recommend at this point that we table this till next month's meeting and will notify her of the fact that you will be, uh, charged an additional.
Table fee?
And he will be charged, you know, an, an additional public hearing fee for tabling, um, and that we will pick this up next month.
But then, then that will end the public hearing applications. At this point, we will begin our business meeting. We'll take roll call. We won't let Bart is absent. Gentlemen, you've been provided a copy of the agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve that agenda. So move. And do we have a second?
Second.
Second by John. All in favor? Any opposed? All right. Gentlemen, you've been provided a copy of the minutes from yesterday's meeting. I'll entertain a motion to approve those.
Second.
Second by, Bob, any discussion, corrections, revisions? Hearing none, all in favor? I, any opposed? All right. Hearing none, all in favor? I, any opposed? All right. Any unfinished business? Nope, none. All right, we will be taking action on the public hearing applications first. Under consideration is the conditional use for Ian Campbell. Gentlemen, do you have a? Motion? Motion to approve. Motion by John to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Bob. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. John, would you read the possible approval reasons?
Let it do. The requested applicant, if approved, will be consistent with the spirit and the intent of the zoning code. And will not be contrary to the public interest. After reviewing the application and considering all related testimony, the application, if approved. With conditions, will not harm the public or neighboring land use. The testimony in opposition, there was no testimony in opposition. Visibility is good at the driveway location. There are no public safety issues. The purpose proposal matches the lots and the available area.
Mr. Wade, would you please read the conditions?
Therefore, the requested application, if approved, the following conditions shall apply. The development must be in substantial compliance with the site plan. All other required setbacks and all other codes must be complied with. All permits must be obtained, including land use, building and sanitary, if needed. The applicant applicant is responsible for contacting the building inspector regarding the. Applicability of commercial building permits. Adequate parking must be provided. The applicant will allow agents of Washtere County access to the property to ensure compliance with all applicable regulations. Sorry. If the building has any floor drains, the applicant is responsible for checking with the D N R to determine how the waste are to be collected and disposed of. The applicant is responsible for complying with any other applicable regulations. All advertising signs must be in accordance with all county and state requirements. All hazardous and toxic materials, including waste oils, shall be stored and handled in accordance with state and federal requirements. Normal business hours shall be maintained preferably Monday through Friday with limited hours on the weekend. Storage of products, materials, inventory, supplies, parts or scrap. Or waste materials shall be conducted in accordance with Section fifty-eight dash two thirty-six. Paragraph twenty-one, Section J of the county zoning code. There shall be no sales of products directly from the residence.
All right, gentlemen, after hearing the reasons and conditions, I will ask for a roll call vote. Have you think?
Both approve.
Bob, we don't approve. Gentlemen, I'm going to approve. I approve. Congratulations. Good luck with your business. Next, we will consider the applicant, the conditional use application for Mark Dolman. Gentlemen, do you have a suggestion, a motion? Motion to approve. By Mr. Wade to approve. Do we have a second? Second. Second by Mr. Van Omegrin. Any discussion? Mr. Wade, would you please read the possible reasons for approval?
The requested application, if approved, will be consistent with the spirit and intent of the zoning code and will not be contrary to the public interest because. After reviewing the application. There was no other testimony. Visibility is good at the driveway location and there are no public safety issues. The proposal matches the lot and available area.
Thank you, Mr. Van Omegrin. If you read the conditions, please.
Therefore. The requested application, if approved, following conditions shall apply. The development must be in substantial compliance with site plan and testimony provided at the public hearing. All other required setbacks and all other codes must be complied with. Adequate parking must be provided. The driveway shall meet all required codes, including fire and access code requirements. To provide for access by emergency vehicles. In addition, the driveway shall provide good visibility and a turnout area to prevent backing onto the road. The applicant will allow agents of Washtere County access to the property to ensure compliance with all applicable regulations. The trailer must be kept licensed and roadworthy at all times. No additions, attachments or permanent foundations are allowed. The trailer must be located at least ten feet from all lot lines. I'm sorry, one hundred feet from all lot lines. The trailer shall be located so that it is not visible from neighboring properties or public road. The trailer must be served by adequate sanitary facilities separate from those provided in the trailer. The travel trailer must be used in accordance with camping. Trailer, travel trailer or mobile camper standards. Per Section fifty-eight dash two thirty-six parentheses seventeen of all county zoning ordinance. The zoning office shall annually inspect the trailer to ensure the compliance with these conditions.
Thank you. And then after hearing the reasons and conditions, gentlemen, I'll ask for a roll call vote. Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Wade, approve. Mr. Van Omegrin, approve. And myself approve. Congratulations. At this point, gentlemen, I would entertain a motion to. Table the Vern Wagner rezoning request until next month's meeting. Mr. King, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, and then I will, all in favor of that motion, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Review of possible action, request for extensions?
And we have none.
All right, review of minor changes?
We have none there as well.
Review of next month's public hearing applications for time and route planning purposes.
Becky, what do we, we have two? Well, we have the tabled and I believe two conditional uses, so we'll have three items.
The zone change.
Thank you. We had a financial report yesterday, therefore I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? I, yeah, adjourn. Thank you, gentlemen.
Good evening, everybody. I'll call this meeting, Washtere County Board of Adjustments to Order. This meeting will be conducted in the same manner as the application served by the Planning and Zoning Committee. Please remember to keep your comments brief and relative in a manner of hand. The same time limits will apply to testimony, which is five minutes for the applicant. Outside of committee questions, three minutes for any other testimony, including any rebuttal by the applicant. Anyone other than the applicant or the representative wishing to speak at this hearing must have registered. Anyone who is not should do so immediately and submit the registration slip to the zoning administrator. This board has looked at all the properties and records will reflect these observations. Following the public hearing, the board will conduct a monthly business meeting. At which time we will vote on the applications. You may stay and hear how the applications are decided, or you may leave following the public hearing. Any person affected by administrative decision of this board. Has thirty days from the filing of tonight's decision to file an appeal. Such appeals are heard by the Washtere County Circuit Court. Information on appeals is available from the clerk of court's office and qualified legal counsel. The county assumes no liability, makes no warranty as to the legality of any construction. Commenced prior to that expiration of this thirty day period. And now I'll introduce the board. George Peterman, Jess Urban, John Shirk, John Benz, and I'm Kevin Fitzgerald. Hearing tonight. Is. Variance Michael Schwartz.
Shet.
And Matthew King, Onida, Wisconsin, that made an application for a variance. After the fact, in accordance with Section fifty-eight dash three ninety-six of the Washtere County zoning code. Construction of a paper patio with fire pit placed within thirty-two. Feet, one inch of the wetland setback, fifty foot required. In RS twenty residential zone within the shoreline area of Lake Morris. Location, a parcel land known as Lot One of the Morris Lakeview subdivision, Section seventeen. T nineteen N R eleven E, out of Mount Morris, Lake Morris. Player number W sixty-five twenty-nine Simmonson Lane. Will the applicant or spokesperson, please come to the microphone, state your name and tell us a little bit. About the project.
Sure. Good evening. My name is Matthew King and. On August of twenty-one, we hired a professional local company to install the paper patio. Approximately two hundred and seventy square feet, give or take. And come to find out about a year later, I got a letter stating that we were approaching. We were far enough from the wetlands, which was obviously to my surprise, since we hired a professional, but. In any event, the main reason for the patio and my main reason for the variance is for hardship for my land, for my, my family. My mom is partially disabled. And it provides a safe, flat, consistent service for, or consistent surface for her to be able to walk on and use our land. In addition. For the variance, if it doesn't get approved, I'm more than happy at my cost. To improve what wetland is there even more and. There's some other things that we can do too. I did talk to the conservation technician, Sam Jansen. And he had, he had said that if we created a berm and put a rain garden on top of it, that would be very sufficient to for. Any potential water runoff, even though we're still thirty-two feet away, so.
Okay, I've got some questions for you. And then board members might have some questions for you. Answer them best as you can.
Yeah.
There has been a recent survey, correct?
Correct.
So we know where the lot lines are?
Yes, we do.
How close is this patio to the wetland?
Thirty-two kidding. Wait, what? Yeah, thirty-two point one.
So we know where the wetland boundary is?
Yes, it's not, the wetland boundary on the plot of survey that was sent to the county is not a straight line, so it. It does kind of curve depending on how you, how you're looking at it.
Paper bricks are there. What's under the paper bricks?
Well, the surface there that is there is the sandy clay surface. And then on top of that is the drainage pebble. It is a permeable surface, so water is able to flow through that surface.
Are there any other improvements planned for the property?
No, there's not.
Did you have a permit when you did this project?
I believe the professional that did the service was taking care of that as.
Did you, as the landowner, come into zoning office and get a permit?
No, we were told that that was taken care of by the landscaping company.
What are the hardships and unique property limitations which would support this project?
Set, come again?
What are the hardships and unique property limitations which would support this project?
Yeah, based on how my, my lot is configured. The, the wetlands, again, aren't a straight line and. It is still further, further setback, almost thirty-two feet from the required fifty. And again, the hardship. For our land is, it's unique to other properties around the lake where the wetland is considered further up from, from the lot, from the shore than one whole.
This is unique to your property only, not other properties around the lake?
Correct. Well, I don't know every property, but I would say it's pretty unique because I'm, my setback is pretty far where my house is. It's. Pretty setback, setback pretty far.
When you built this, were you involved in building this house?
Yes, we worked with.
Did you take the permit up?
Yes, we did.
Were you told at that time where the house could be set, forty foot of wetlands?
Absolutely, that's, that's why the house is set where it's at, based on the. Because it's a permanent structure based on where the wetlands are, so.
Um, what else?
And that's why also the deck, because that's considered a permanent structure, had to be. It's, it's only a certain amount of feet wide, otherwise I would have loved to have a larger deck, but we were constrained to where the wetlands were to. The deck be as small as it is, which is also on the plot map.
You, in our packet of paperwork. I believe. You hired Heartland Group to do a survey for you?
Correct, one of the most respected in the state fair in terms of.
You probably got a copy of this?
Yes.
Actually, I chose how much of the deck that you put in is in the wetland area?
No, the deck is not in the wetland area.
The patio.
Patio.
The patio is in the wetland area, so again, it's thirty-two point one feet. I don't have that in front of me, but.
I have, the other plot of surveys, one that you guys should have too. Just ask you if you'd like to see it.
If we got, they have.
I don't have any further questions at this time.
I just have one, what did your contractor say when you called him and told him about this problem?
So the reason we didn't contact the contractor immediately was because after we got that letter. The attorney that advised me that he was going to work with the county to try to find a, a way to. You know, keep the, keep the patio. Mainly before, for my.
So he didn't contract you, talk to your contractor either? Your attorney didn't call him either? So your contractor has no idea there's a problem there?
I'm not aware that my contractor has, has, has an idea of the problem. Again, the attorney, at, at. His advisement was working with the county to try to. Keep the patio because of the hardship.
Okay, that's all I had.
Or. Nothing. Jess? John? Can I have a seat? If we, we'll give you a rebuttal after we get somewhere. Correspondence?
Staff received no correspondence and we have nobody registered to speak.
Staff comments?
Okay, everyone should have a copy of the final staff report before you. I am going to go through this in somewhat detail because I want to just talk about some of the. Some of the issues that have taken place to get us to where we are today. The property in question is actually, it's, it's a subdivision of the Morris Lakeview subdivision, which dates back to nineteen forty-nine. Unlike many of those adjacent lots in the subdivision, which are far substandard by today's standards. Due to them being very narrow and shallow, this subject lot.
So the reason we didn't contact the contractor immediately was because after we got that letter, the attorney that advised me that he was going to work with the county to try to find a, a way to, you know, keep the, keep the patio. Meaning before for my.
So he didn't contract your, talk to your contractor either? Your attorney didn't call him either? So your contractor has no idea there's a problem there?
I'm not aware that my contractor has a, has an idea of the problem. Again, uh, the attorney, uh, his advisement was working with the county to try to keep the patio because of the hardship.
Okay, so I had.
George. Nothing. Jess? John? Can I have a seat? If we, we'll give you a rebuttal after we get some more here. Correspondence?
Uh, staff received no correspondence and we have nobody registered to speak.
Staff comments?
Okay, everyone should have a copy of the final staff report before you. I am going to go through this in somewhat detail because I want to just talk about some of the some of the issues that have taken place to get us to where we are today. The property in question is actually, it's, it's a subdivision of the Morris Lakeview subdivision, which dates back to nineteen forty-nine. Unlike many of those adjacent lots in the subdivision, which are far substandard by today's standards due to them being very narrow and shallow, this subject lot is actually very close to meeting all standards of an RS twenty single-family residential lot. One unique feature though, that this lot does possess is the fact that it is not only a riparian lot, but it does maintain considerable wetlands located down near the lake shoreline. Despite the presence of said wetlands, though, the lot is and was buildable. Now, staff has conducted a number of on-sites dating back to nineteen, uh, to twenty nineteen. In December of twenty nineteen, staff was asked to conduct an onsite by the, uh, the current applicant so as to mark the ordinary high for possible raise and rebuild. Staff's flags were then going to be placed upon a plan of survey, uh, by the surveyor, which you should have a copy of those attached, not only the onsite, but the plan of survey at that point in time. Then on April twenty-seventh, staff was requested by the applicant once again to perform an additional onsite to confirm wetland setbacks for new construction of the original home, or excuse me, uh, as the original home had since been raised. You should also have a copy of that onsite dated for twenty-seven twenty. Then on June sixteenth, twenty twenty, a land use permit was issued to the applicant to place a twenty-six and a half by fifty-eight, three-bedroom, single-family dwelling upon the property. Said permit was then amended shortly thereafter to allow construction of a six-by-five access deck located at the front of the house and then a fifty-eight foot by eight foot deck at the rear of the house. Staff conditionalized the approval of the permit and as noted in, on the permit you have before you stating that the deck being setback at wetland flags set by staff. It should be noted, the brick paved area was not included on that permit. And then finally, on June twenty-eighth of twenty twenty-three, staff was contacted by Adam Kelly to perform yet another onsite for a proposed five-foot walkway from the rear patio to the home, uh, of the home to the lake. It was at this onsite that the current violation was notified. A letter of non-compliance and violation was sent in September of twenty twenty-three. We received no response. A second letter was then sent to the owners on December twelfth of twenty twenty, twenty twenty-three due to non-compliance. Once again, we didn't hear anything. So finally a citation was issued to the owners due to continual non-compliance. And ultimately this went to court. On March nineteenth of twenty twenty-five, Judge Blader gave the applicant until June twenty-five, uh, twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five to have a formal wetland delineation prepared. And the applicant has since submitted a plan of survey that does clearly, uh, has wetlands as flagged with setbacks noted at thirty-two point one feet. The Board of Adjustments conducted their onsite on Monday, May twelfth, and were generally opposed to the subject variance request. Board felt that the applicant failed to provide any justification that would substantiate the structure approaching into the limits of the setback required for the wetlands. The board felt the applicants were amply aware of the setbacks via the various on-sites performed by staff over the years as well as the conditions stated in previous approved land use permits. The board was also concerned over erosion demarcations that have occurred in the rear yard near the wetlands as a direct result of stormwater coming off the expanse of impervious surfaces. The fifty-foot wetland setback is required to prevent exactly what was observed. The board also felt that allowing said brick paved fire pit seating area in exchange for an after-the-fact wetland mitigation proposal is not in keeping with the intent of the mitigation definition as outlined in county code and would establish a very dangerous precedence for future requests. Staff has reviewed this request and voices a serious concern regarding the subject matter. To date, the county has not allowed approachments into wetlands and or shoreline setbacks for either proposed and or after-the-fact citations. Staff firmly believe these setbacks are critical to the protection and enhancement of our overall surface water and groundwater quality. Despite the submittal of a wetland upland, a wetland upland restoration plans, studies, studies have shown that even the smallest increase in impervious surfaces and or encroachment of structures to these sensitive areas has dead, has had detrimental impacts to aquatic life, aquatic life and native wetland species. While there's no doubt that a restoration plan could enhance an existing wetland, county code as it pertains to quote-unquote mitigation was never intended to be an after-the-fact remedy. Doing so would establish a very dangerous precedence for future development on existing riparian parcels. Staff also believes that based upon the aforementioned on-sites and permit, permits, the applicant was well of the ware of the county standards and setback requirements. While staff does sympathize, sympathize with the applicant and the current physical limitations being experienced by a family member, unfortunately, the circumstances of the applicant and self-imposed hardships are not justifications in which to grant variance. Throughout this process, staff has routinely offered viable code compliant alternatives that would facilitate the use of the yard such as a five-foot walkway, crushed stone and or flat grassed area. While the board will be making a recommendation on this request later in the evening, staff is recommending denial of the after-the-fact variance subject to the conditions listed in your report.
Thank you, Todd. Any questions, Todd? Scoring on any rebuttal?
I mean, the only thing I'm, the only thing I'm going to say is, I, while I hear what you're saying is, I did all my due diligence when we built the house. I never thought that a paper patio that is permeable, which means water, you've said impervious, it is a permeable patio. Was it permanent structure?
The record, it, it is not a permeable surface. A permeable surface is an engineered brick that also is engineered below the surface to allow water to penetrate. And as we saw on the onsite, there was actual demarcation from stormwater erosion lea- leaving the deck and heading right towards the wetlands.
Right. And I, I understand that you saw that and I knew what line you're talking about, but we also haven't been able to plant any dirt or grass around there because we were waiting for the city. So a lot of that is remedied pretty quickly with proper planting of grass. And again, we hired a professional company to do this. I, I relied on them to have, have this done. So the amount of money that we're going to spend to rip up a patio instead could be used to improve wetlands that were not, were not in the wetland, but it would be used to improve what's already there and make it even better. So that's it.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, thank you. Our second hearing tonight, William Wick, Sussas, Wisconsin, has made an application for a variance in accordance with section fifty-eight dash five forty-two, Sub C, Sub Two of the Sherwood County zoning code to raise an existing non-conforming, single-family dwelling and build a new twenty-seven foot by eleven inch by fifty-two inch, single-family dwelling with a twenty-four foot by twenty-four foot, ten inch attached garage and an eight foot by twenty-six foot, ten inch attached deck to come within eleven feet of both sides lot lines. Located in RS twenty, single-family residential zone within the shoreline area of Pearl Lake. A parcel landowner's lot fifty-seven of the Oneida Plan, section thirty, T nineteen N, R twelve E, town of Leon, Pearl Lake. Fire number W forty-seven seventy-five, North Pearl Lake Road. Will the applicant, please come forward, state your name and tell us a little bit what you want to do, William.
Good evening. My name is Bill Wick. My project is to demo raise an existing home, cottage and unattached garage and rebuild a new home and unattached garage. And you guys came out obviously on Monday and you decide so. My request is a variance to go from the fifteen foot requirement from a, from a property line to the side of a home to shorten that up to eleven feet from the property lines on both sides of the new house to the lot lines. The restriction is because the houses, I should say the lot is only fifty feet. So it's just, it's really hard to to stay within that, you know, if it was fifteen and fifteen, I'd only be twenty-foot white house. So that's basically my request on the variance to go to eleven feet from the property lines. The unattached garage is really not an issue that I'm able to stay seven and a half feet. It's much further back on the property. So, um, other than that, that's, that's about it.
Okay. I got some questions and then the board might have some questions to hear. A recent survey has been completed, correct?
Yes, I had, uh, Morton and Hillsley out of, uh.
We know you're sure of the lot lines, the way you had it all staked out.
Yes.
Have you talked to the neighbors and told them about this?
I have. Uh, and after you guys left on Monday, I, I talked to the people that are, live next door who are, they live in Minnesota. And so there's just like a couple of trees that are basically right on our, you know, share of property line. And they're, they're kind of suspect just because they're very old trees and big trees and woodpeckers that pounded in the holes in them that I, I want to take those trees down. So I don't have an issue with, uh, those trees hitting my new house. So, um, she was very good, you know, over the fall, but they're going to be up in first week in June and it'll be easier. They're, they're quite elderly. So I, you know, seeing as I, I think it'd be easier for me to explain it to them. So, I, I don't see an issue with the trees that I want to take down, but you know, I'm sure we can work that.
That's the check with them. What paper foundation are you going to build this on?
So the construction is going to be, uh, ICF construction. It's insulated concrete form walls. So the, the footings are basically a two-foot wide footing by ten inches thick. Then the, the first floor, basement wall, I would say is an eight-inch concrete poured wall with styrofoam on both inside and outside that, that concrete. The, the next floor, the first floor living space area is a four-inch concrete wall with two and five eighths styrofoam on the inside and the outside. And then just regular wood trusses, shankled ceiling.
The back, the back garage also be on a board slab?
I'm going to do, yeah, I can do that on a, on a board slab, four-inch ICF construction.
How far above the existing grade will the first floor elevation be and how much filling and grading will be done?
So on, on the house, um, each floor is nine feet tall and then the roof is eight twelve pitch. So from that, from the very, the walkout on the lakeside, it would be, uh, let's see, it was nine, nine and, uh, eight. So what is that? Twenty-seven feet on the house side from grade to the, to the peak. And the garage was seventeen feet from grade.
This will be less than thirty-five feet?
Yes, yeah, way under thirty-five.
With the steep slope there, how are you going to deal with erosion and stormwater runoff?
So, uh, part of it is I'm able to take probably sixty, seventy percent of the water from the, from the roof and actually direct it through storm drains and take it all the way to the back of the property because I have enough pitch to do that. And I want to use the remaining water to, to take care of, uh, actually irrigating the, the plants that are going to be uh, as part of the upgrade with the shoreline because of a setback. I have some concrete currently now that are sidewalks that will be ripped out and I got to put in steps, uh, so that the water runoff can get in the ground better, but then the plants and stuff that'll be on that, that front area that has to be restored after the excavation for the dig. I'd like to use some of that water to feed that.
Just, just, just to clarify, a twenty-five percent or the lakeside will have gutters, correct?
Yeah, the whole, yeah, the house has gutters. So it'll be gutters to downspouts and then diverted through, uh, storm drains.
Any other improvements planned on the property besides that walkway to the lake?
Uh, not on a, no, not on a lakeside.
All other setbacks will be met?
Yes.
Something systems going back behind the new garage way in the back of the lot?
Yeah, the new drain field will be behind the new unattached garage. A considerable distance from the house, yes.
I don't know that there is, but the question is, are any non-conforming structures on the property? Okay. What other options do you have here?
Very few. I mean, as far as when you say options, like as far as the building?
Yeah, you probably build about a nineteen-foot wide house.
Yeah.
Which isn't really enough.
At that point, I feel like I'd be parking a trailer. So.
Yeah. And you're already, in, in this project, you're moving the house farther away from the lot line and centering it more on the lot, correct?
Currently, the, the house actually impedes quite a bit. On the one side, it's, uh, there's a, like a bedroom and a bathroom that are five and a half feet from the property line. And now we would be actually pulling that in almost six feet. So it's, you know, much more rectangular than what the current layout is. The, the current layout has some jettisons that, that impede on the, on the, on that fifteen feet of line.
So you'd be eleven foot on either side?
Straight line.
What, what's the hardship and unique property limitations, sir?
Probably the fact that it's fifty feet wide. That's just, you know, it is, it's, it's narrow.
You got, you got a big lot, but it's narrow.
It's long, yeah, long, but very narrow.
Permits. Have you figured out what permits you're all going to need yet for this project?
Yes, I have obviously building permit.
If you have any questions, if it's approved, you would come in and see the zoning office.
Absolutely.
When we were out there, we asked when you were going to start that and you said probably in August?
Yes, I'd like to start the demo in, uh, the beginning of August and then start the construction. Hopefully about a month after that, I, obviously I need some trees removed and excavation to dig out the, there's, there's a small part of the house that has an existing basement, you know, to have that dug out leveled off before they could take the trees down. Also, some power requirements. I have a, a power line that goes across my yard to feed two neighbors that are to the east of me. Um, and I do have contacted, you know, the Columbia Adams to, to take care of that with a new transformer underground to get rid of that overhead line.
That's all the questions I have this time. George?
Yeah, I didn't have a question. I just wanted to make sure it's clear. You guys cleared that up. Crossing this variance of eleven feet from the property line, it's actually making it better and it's taking the house further away from the property line where it currently is.
That is correct.
So I just wanted to make sure because up until about three minutes ago, you know, uh, that wasn't stated anywhere. And I think it's important to note that for the record, that it's going from approximately six feet to eleven feet. And not like encroaching more towards the property line.
Uh, no, I, I don't have any questions.
No, I had one. My concern also was a twenty-five foot, uh, twenty-five percent of your runoff going towards the lake that you cleared that up. And I agree with what you're trying to do.
Okay, thank you.
Senior John?
Uh, just a compliment, John. We had it all lined there for us and that you contacted your power company, you're going underground with power. It's, uh, very complimentary to you.
Thank you. Okay, have a seat. We'll give you a rebuttal if you need it. And do any correspondence?
Uh, staff has no correspondence and nobody registered to speak.
Staff comments?
Okay. Subject properties, old cottage, cottage lot, uh, coming from the Winita subdivision, which measures, uh, forty-nine point eight-two feet in width by approximately four hundred and ninety-seven feet in length that dates back to nineteen twenty-four. Uh, the original cottage and sanitary system far pre-date county zoning. The cottage itself is actually non-conforming structure due to the fact that it was constructed only sixty-nine feet away from the ordinary high. It's setback only ten and a half feet from the westerly side lot line and only five point nine feet or thereabouts from the easterly side lot line. The owner now seeks to raise the old structure and build a new modestly sized, uh, home in its place. Staff conducted an onsite originally back in twenty twenty-three to discuss this exact situation, a raise and rebuild. However, the plans never came to fruition. Staff then conducted additional onsite in January of this year to discuss the current plans. Proposed home will be setback seventy-one feet from the ordinary high. Should be noted that the average for that area right now is sixty-two point five. So that should be setting the house further back than what's, what could be permitted. And then eleven feet back from both side lot lines. The Board of Adjustments conducted their onsite on Monday, May twelfth, and we're generally supportive of the applicant's request. The board recognized the hardship of the nearness of the lot and the non-conformity of the existing home. The board also felt the variance was in keeping with similar, uh, requests made in recent year. Staff also has reviewed this request and believes the applicants have gone to great lengths and to design a home that's not only compatible with the smaller cottages in and around the area, but is in keeping with similar requests made in recent year. Staff also commends the applicant for pushing the home back away from the water even greater than what the average would be so as to not negatively impact the views of surrounding properties. While the board will be making a recommendation on this request later in the evening, staff is recommending approval of the variance to raise and rebuild, subject to the conditions listed in your report.
Thank you, Todd. Questions, I've had anyone? Hearing none. We will go to our next request. Paul Turner, Berlin, Wisconsin, has made applications for a variance in accordance with sections fifty-eight dash two thirty-five B, Sub Five, Sub B, fifty-eight dash eight twenty-six, Sub B, fifty-eight dash five forty-two, Sub C, Sub One, excuse me, of the Washoe County zoning code to instruct a twenty-six foot by twenty-six foot addition on the north side of an existing non-conforming, single-family dwelling, non-conforming due to existing structure being located sixty feet from center line of County Road XX. Seventy-five feet required, located in a general agricultural zone. Seventy five feet required, located in a general agricultural zone. An approximate three point five acre parcel land known as part of the northwest one quarter or the southwest one quarter. Lot one, CSM fifty three twenty, now lot one, CSM fifty four hundred, section fourteen, T eighteen N, R thirteen E, town roar, fire number N one four six four, County Road XX. Will the applicant please step forward, state your name for the record and tell us a little bit what you want to do there?
Sure, Mr. Turner. My name is Paul Turner. Uh, we've lived there since two thousand nine. We bought the property then. Uh, and when we bought it, the grass was head high. Uh, it was in a lot of disrepair, so uh, we've totally remodeled the house in two thousand and fifteen. We put an addition on to the west, uh, for more bedrooms because when we remodeled it was, it became a one-bedroom house, so we added on bedrooms because we have eight children. And now we are looking to add an addition on the north side of the house uh, that is farthest from the County Road XX. Twenty six by twenty six, uh, mother-in-law suite, uh, for my parents. What else I have to say? I guess that's pretty much summarizes it.
Okay, I have some questions for you. Answer best as you can and maybe the board will have some questions for you. Has there been a recent survey?
Yes, Martinson and Isley out of Menasha.
So we know, we know where the road right of way is, correct?
Yes, sir.
Have you talked to the town and county?
I talked with C, yes, I talked with C J Young, the town supervisor, and he said he didn't have a problem with it.
He had no problem, he had no problem with it.
Yes.
During the construction, the erosion and stormwater runoff, how are you going to deal with that?
Uh, it's in the center of my grassy lawn, so we can put erosion up if you like.
There's, there's wetlands or anything close by?
Yes, sir.
What type of foundation are you going to have?
Uh, foundation with eight foot basement.
How far above the existing grade?
Same as what's there now? Uh, it'll be, yes. Yeah, the existing garage that we removed was uh, about twenty four inches, thirty inches lower than our existing house, but the new structure will have, it'll allow my parents to walk once they're in the house, straight into the rest of the house, although the same floor height as the existing house.
Garage will be, what about the house then? Getting in?
Yeah, yeah, there will no, no garage. The garage will be gone.
What's the finish line going to be?
Uh, I think in the drawings I had it at like, around fourteen feet, just under fourteen feet.
Any other improvements planned? Any other improvements planned?
Like down the road, are you thinking?
After this one?
Maybe eventually I'll put a pole shed up since I lost my garage, but at the ti, at this moment, not at the moment.
All setbacks will be met besides this one with the highway?
Yeah, we're a hundred, over a hundred feet from all the other property lines.
The new construction is completely out of the area for the highway. You'll be far enough away, right?
Yeah, we're over a hundred feet from the highway where the construction's going, yes.
Subtic system, you got a mound system off the side there.
Just the way up, yes.
Plenty here, plenty of room for parking, plenty of room for turning around. Any other options? Or what else could you do besides this project?
Nothing that I know of.
It's about the only place you can add on, correct?
Yeah, yes, sir.
If you built on the sides, you'd be even closer to the highway.
Correct, correct.
What's the hardship and unique property limitations?
Uh, the house was, as best we can tell from the, uh, when we put our other addition on, we looked and, um, you go back far enough, the, uh, you could only tell when additions were put on or when houses were built based on when the property taxes went up. And based on when the property taxes went up, our best estimate is that the original building was built over a hundred years ago. And so we were, we predated any, any existing setbacks or anything like that.
Unique property limitation?
Um, the house within the, within the setback, there's just a big rect, big square law.
It's an old farm, also.
Yeah.
Permits, you don't, you need some permits for this project? Do you know what you need?
Land use and then just our regular.
Have any questions? If it's approved, come and see the zoning, they'll help you.
Absolutely.
When do you want to start this project if it's granted?
Uh, we tore the garage off. Uh, the excavator could start probably sometime in July, I would imagine.
I think I was at the twenty fifteen. I think you and I were heard in twenty fifteen when the last variance. I don't have any further questions. George?
Just, John.
John, we're gonna have a basement under that?
Yes, I'll have a fully equipped basement.
Eight foot, okay. Okay, please have a seat and we'll give you a rebuttal if you need it, and if you'd like it, and we'll go to correspondence.
Um, staff has received no correspondence and we have nobody registered to speak.
Staff's comments?
Okay, um, for an applicant is really no stranger to the process of the county. The, um, applicants have had several on sites performed since two thousand to discuss the location and type of sanitary system, which is in the at-grade mound located at the west side of the house. Um, applicants also received a couple land use permits in twenty ten and twenty eleven for some interior work of construction of a wraparound porch. And in twenty fifteen, the applicants received a variance to permit a construction of a twenty six by twenty six addition onto the west side of the home due to the home being a non-conforming structure. It's non-conforming due to the fact that it's set back only sixty feet from the center line of County Road XX, when a minimum of seventy five feet is required. Um, the placement of the home and, or I should say, the addition will far exceed all side, rear, and front yard setbacks. In addition, it should be noted that the addition is only taking up, given the fact that it's going atop an, an old garage location, it's only adding additional three hundred and forty square feet of area, um, you know, to, to the home. Board of adjustments conducted their onsite on Monday and were generally supportive of the applicant's request. The board recognized the hardship due to the existing roadway setback and subsequent non-conformity of the existing home. Board also felt that variance was in keeping with similar requests made in recent year. Staff two has reviewed this request and believes the applicant, applicant has craftfully designed an addition that will minimize any impact on adjoining properties as well as the occupants. Staff also believes the current request is in line with previous requests made in recent year. Um, however, one thing we'd like to point out is that we would like to avoid compounding of variances and/or the continual expansion of a non-conforming structure. And staff is going to recommend that no additional variances be granted as this would be the second variance since twenty fifteen to a non-conforming structure. Uh, while the board will be making a recommendation on this request later in the evening, staff is recommending approval of the variance to construct a twenty six by twenty six addition, subject to the conditions listed in your report.
Thank you, Todd. Any questions of Todd, George, Jess, John? We'll go to our final various requests tonight. Stephen Smiths, Markinson, Wisconsin, has made an application for a variance in accordance with sections fifty eight dash two thirty five, sub B, sub five, sub A, fifty eight dash eight twenty six, sub B, fifty eight dash five forty two, sub C, sub one, of the Washere County zoning code to construct a fourteen foot by twenty six foot L-shaped attached deck exceeding maintenance and repair to existing non-conforming, single-family dwelling, non-conforming due to existing structure being located less than half the required distance, side lot line fifteen feet required, locate an RS twenty residential, single fam, single zone within the shoreline area of Silver Lake. A parcel land known as lot four, CSM forty two ninety one, section O six, T nineteen, T eighteen N, R eleven E, Town of Marion, Silver Lake, fire number W sixty nine one nine, Silver Avenue. So the applicant or the spokesperson, please come forward. Please state your name for the record and tell us a little bit what you would like to do.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Steve Smiths and I'm requesting a variance on the property if you allow for the construction of a deck. Our existing, uh, structure is over a hundred years old and, uh, it is within the fifteen feet on the lot line. The fact it actually hangs over the lot line onto the neighbor, but that's the way it was done a hundred years ago, I guess. This deck though would be fifteen feet, six inches and fifteen feet, one inch from the property lines. So it is because of the existing structure, the way it was done years ago is the reason for the variance. And, uh, we did do a, a survey on the property and, uh, then that's where T and Land Serving came up with, uh, the distance of the deck to the lot lines. And we did also talk to the adjoining, uh, landowners, the neighbors, and neither one of them had a problem with the deck.
Okay, I have some questions for you. We do have a recent survey. How long have you owned the house?
One year.
Did you know where the lot lines were when you bought it?
Yes.
Huh?
Yep.
You know that the survey shows that part of the house is across the lot line?
Correct, but there was a, uh, a prior, two prior owners had that taken care of, so there's uh, legal work that's taking care of that. It's okay.
There is legal work being done?
Yeah, Robert Campbell.
I, I could research that.
That the first you heard of that?
Yeah, I, yeah, I was not aware of it because it doesn't show on the CSM. Usually there's notation.
It's just the, the bar, uh, next to the road, just the corner of the house is actually on the neighbor's lot line.
We can, we can.
It is a hundred-year-old structure.
Okay, um. So you talked to the neighbors, talked to Town of Marion about this?
No, I did not talk to Town of Marion.
What type of foundation is this going to be on?
It's just a post, uh, a foundation, our, uh, sonotubes and concreted posts into the ground below the frost line.
The deck that you want to put in, at what height is it going to be? Three feet? Is it the same as the, the stairs that go into the house? That high?
It's like a little slightly below, slightly below it.
And what?
Slightly below that, those stairs.
A step below or?
Uh, three inches.
Okay. So it'll be how far off the ground?
Three feet.
Any other improvements planned?
No, sir.
All those setbacks will be met?
Correct.
Subtic system's not applicable here. You're on a sanitary district?
Correct.
Non-conforming structures on a property? Any other options?
Um, not that I'm aware of.
When it's not to do it. Um, you can't put it on the other side. It'd be too close to the neighbor's, the lot line. Um, hardship and unique property limitations?
It's because of the size of the property or the size of the, the lot.
If this house was in the middle of a, a lot and you weren't over the lot line or too close to the lot line, you would be able to do this without a variance. The only thing that's doing this is the back corner of that house is across the lot line.
Correct.
But it's, it's within fifteen feet. Too, but if it wasn't for that back corner, then you were off there.
Which I didn't.
I had, I had concerns when I looked at this about the property being over the the lot line and by us agreeing to a variance, are we approving a building being in violation or not violation of being on somebody else's property and compounding a problem? But if you say there is a deed problem, a deed being done here, then I don't have a problem.
It was done years ago.
Okay. Permits, you'll need permits. Are you going to do it yourself or are you going to?
Building permit and, um, land use permit.
You can go see these guys if you need help.
Already been applied for.
Now, when, when you, when would you start if you, this was granted?
As soon as possible.
Okay. I don't have any further questions. George? Jess?
John?
None. What's the, uh, what kind, is this going to be a wood deck or?
A composite deck.
Composite.
Okay, thank you for considering it, man.
Okay, thank you. We'll give you a rebuttal if you need it. Correspondence?
Uh, we have no correspondence and nobody registered to speak.
Staff comments?
Okay, um, as stated by the applicant, this lot does date back, uh, over a hundred years. It's actually part of the Silver Chris Resort subdivision, which, uh, was recorded back in eighteen ninety four. This lot was rated later re-subdivided in two thousand as part of CSM forty two ninety one, um, which was known as lot four. Records on this property for the county standpoint actually began in two thousand when the current owner received a variance to construct the detached garage that we saw there uh, for personal storage within fifteen feet of the Silver Lake Avenue right of way. Um, the county did perform an onsite back in twenty twenty with, uh, with the previous owner and a builder to discuss a raise and rebuild of the existing home, but nothing ever materialized. Staff then conducted additional onsite in twenty twenty four to discuss the possible deck construction uh, with the owner, which I know Rick, uh, Erdel from our office was out there. And we craftfully positioned it so that it would meet all applicable setbacks, ordinary high, as well as both side yard setbacks. The Board of Adjustments conducted their onsite on Monday, May twelfth, and we're generally supportive of the variance requirement. We did recognize the hardships imposed by the placement of the existing home and the narrowness of the lot. Um, on a side note, though, I would like to point out that staff and the board had recognized that the detached garage appeared to maintain overflow living accommodations. Um, I did research our county files and back in two thousand, when the garage did receive its variance uh, due to the proximity of the roadway, um, as part of the land use permit, there were conditions placed upon that, that it was for personal storage only and that the store, structure was not to be used as a guest house or incidental or for incidental or overflow living purposes. Uh, in matter of fact, the previous, uh, landowner recorded an accessory structure affidavit to that end that does travel with the property. Said structure was to maintain a bathroom, washer, dryer, and sink, and there were to be no other walls erected. The only thing that staff would ask is that prior to the issuance of a land use permit for the proposed decking, that the applicant, uh, contact county staff so that we could just verify full compliance with all previously approved plans. Um, staff has reviewed this request and believe the applicants have gone to great lengths to design a deck that's respectful to the neighboring properties and is consistent with current direction of the board and similar variance requests of recent year. While the board will be making a recommendation on this request, staff is recommending approval of the variance to construct a fourteen by twenty six L-shaped deck, subject to the conditions listed in your report.
Thank you, Todd. Any questions of Todd, George, Jess? John?
No, no, John.
So the affidavit follows all the ownerships?
Correct, affidavit's recorded with the property.
So there, if, there's living quarters in there, then that's violation of the variance.
And that's something that we could talk to the homeowners, homeowners about to bring it back into compliance.
Okay.
If in fact there are issues.
Okay. Any other further questions? Any rebuttal? Okay. That will conclude the, uh, public hearing. We'll do a roll call showing the five of us here. I'll accept a motion for approval of the agenda. Let's move, John.
All right.
George seconds, all in favor? Motion pass. Approval of minutes from Monday's meeting. I'll accept the motion for that. Jess, second. George, seconds, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Motion passed. New business. Take action on the public hearings? Uh, Michael Shades, Town of Mount Morris, fire number W six five two nine seven seven land. Is there a motion on the floor?
Mr. Chairman, I move for denial.
I have a motion to deny as a second.
A second.
George, seconds. We have a motion to deny in a second. Mr. Benz, your reasons for denial?
Well, there's, uh, unnecessary hardship is not present. The code requirements are not unnecessarily burdensome. Not to prevent people from using property for money use. Because the landowner has reasonable use already. The personal circumstances of the applicant and self-imposed hardship cannot be grounds for approval. Other alternatives exist such as removing the brick pavers in the wetland setback area and constructing a five-foot wide walkway and or utilizing crushed stone around the fire pit. A loss of profit or inconvenience is not a hardship. The hardship is not due to unique physical features or limitations of the property. It appears to be unique to the property, to the. to be unique to the pro, to the applicant and follows. There are many other similar lots in the area. The code requirements are not unnecessarily burdensome and should be adhered to. The hardship is unique to the property owner only. This is a self-imposed hardship, no, so no hardship is actually noted and no unique lot features were noted by the board and would prohibit or limit use of the property. So the variance will harm the public interest and neighboring land uses and damage the intent of the zoning code because an approval would be setting a precedent. Public safety could be compromised. This would make a bad situation worse. An increase in water runoff was observed. Harm to water quality is anticipated. The proposal appears to be for convenience to the landowner only. An approval would undermine the code and harm the neighboring, neighboring properties and public interest at large. The landowner should pursue other plans. Therefore, the requested variance, if denied, the following conditions shall apply. The applicant shall remove brick pavers and any retaining wall situated within the limits of the fifty-foot wetland setback by July first, twenty twenty-five. The applicant will allow agents of Oshere County access to the property to ensure compliance with the terms of this decision, Oshere County codes and state and federal laws.
We have a motion in a second and you've heard the reasons, we'll take a roll call vote. George Peterman?
Yes.
Jess?
Deny.
John?
Yes, deny.
Deny.
Deny. Five to zero vote to deny. Approve Mr. Benson's motion to deny. Next one we have is. Smith's property. We're here. West sixty-nine nineteen Silver Lake. I'm sorry, that's wrong. We have to take, what if Wick? Now we want some Wick property. Uh, Wick, William Wick, uh, Town of Leon, Pearl Lake, W forty-seven seventy-five North Pearl Lake Road. Is there a motion on that one?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve. Mr. Irvin has a motion to approve, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Ben, uh, Mr. Sher, seconds. Uh, we've had a motion, a second. Just your reasons for the motion.
An unnecessary hardship is present in the current code. Requirements would be unnecessarily burdensome and prevent the applicant from using the property for a permitted use because very few alternatives exist. The impacts of construction are being minimized by mitigation. A minimal relaxation of code is being granted. Permanent use is not possible on this property without a variance approval. The circumstances are beyond the control of the applicant and are unique to the property, not the applicant. Lot predates zoning regulations and the construction matches the lot and available area. The hardship unreasonably, unreasonably burdensome limitation of setbacks is due to unique physical features or limitations of the property and not the circumstance of the applicant as follows. Very little or no buildable area exists. The lot is very narrow. Steep slopes exist and it's a overall small lot size due to its narrowness. The variance will not harm the public interest or neighboring land usage and, uh, damage the intent of the zoning code because the septic will be upgraded. This will make a bad situation better. Good vegetation exists, uh, is proposed. Proposed use will not harm the public zoning code or neighboring land uses if conditions are followed and a literal enforcement of the zoning code would be unnecessarily burdensome. Therefore, the requested variance is approved, the following conditions shall apply. The development must be in substantial compliance with the site plan and testimony provided at the public hearing. The first floor elevation and filling and grading shall be done in accordance with the site plan and additional information provided at the public hearing. All other required setbacks must be complied with. All permits must be obtained, including land use, building and sanitary. All code requirements must be complied with. It's responsibility of builder and landowner to protect the neighboring lots, lake and road during construction. At the time of building permit and land use permit, the applicant shall revise the plan to incorporate gutters and downspouts on the elevations of the home. Set downspouts must then be connected to a French drain system or other stormwater management system so as to not shed runoff to adjacent properties. Any future construction cannot occur with first, without first obtaining a variance. The applicant will allow agents of Oshere County access to the property to ensure compliance with the terms of this decision, Oshere County codes and state and federal laws. Landowner is responsible for determining lot lines and required setbacks. The building shall not exceed the maximum height of thirty-five feet.
I could just, you heard just his reason for his motion to approve this. We'll take a roll call vote. Mr. Sher?
Yes, approved.
Jess?
Approved.
George? John?
Approved.
Chairman votes yes. Five to nothing. Good luck on your project. Number three on our list, Paul Turner, Town of Aurora, N one four six four, County Road double X. Do you have any motion or discussion on this variance request?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the variance application.
I'd second the motion. Mr. Sher has a motion to approve and Mr. Benson says a second and Mr. Sher, your reasons for your motion to approve?
Excuse me. An unnecessary hardship is present in the current code requirement would be unnecessarily burdensome and prevent the applicant from using the property for a permitted use because few alternatives exist. The impacts of construction are being minimized by mitigation. A minimum relaxation of the code is being granted. A permitted use is not possible on this property without variance approval. The circumstances are beyond the control of the applicant and are unique to the property, not the applicant. And the lot predates zoning regulations and the construction matches the lot and available area. The hardship or unreasonably burdensome limitations of setbacks is due to unique physical features or limitations of the property and not the circumstance of the applicant as follows. Given the setback of the home and the results of previous variance received, no buildable area exists. There we go. And no unique lot features were noted by the board. The variance will harm.
I can hear. What is page three?
Okay. The variance will not harm the public interest or neighboring, neighboring land uses and damage, excuse me, the intent of the zoning code because outside of the existing home, all other applicable setbacks will be met. Traffic is light, traffic is slowed here. The proposed use will not harm the public zoning code or neighboring land uses if conditions are followed. A literal enforcement of the zoning code will be unnecessary and there was no testimony in opposition. Therefore, the request, requested variance, if approved, the following conditions shall apply. The development must be in substantial compliance with the site plan and testimony provided at the public hearing. The first floor elevation and filling and grading shall be done in accordance with the site plan and additional information provided at the public hearing. All other set, required setbacks must be complied with. All permits must be obtained, including land use and building. Staff will evaluate the sanitary system sizing at the time of land use and building permits and all code requirements must be complied with. It is the responsibility of the builder and landowner to protect neighboring lots, uh, and road during construction. Standard erosion controls must be in place at the time of construction. No additional variances for expansion of the non-conforming home will be permitted. Sufficient turnaround area shall be provided to prevent having to, to back out onto the public road. The landowner is responsible for determining the lot lines and the landowner is also responsible for maintaining good visibility at the driveway entrance and the building addition shall be of a comparable height and/or less than the existing home.
Thank you, John. We'll take a roll call vote. We have a motion to approve. Mr. Benson?
A motion to, uh, approval.
Mr. Peterman?
Yes.
Jess?
Approved.
Mr. Sher?
Yeah.
And the chairman votes yes. Five to nothing approval. Congratulations, good luck on your building project, Mr. Turner.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Our last one for this evening, well, I shouldn't say that, we got one after this. We got the moose.
Yeah.
Stephen Smith, Smartuson, Wisconsin, has made an application for a variance in accordance with sections fifty-eight dash two thirty-five, sub B, sub five, sub A, and fifty-eight dash eight twenty-six, sub B, located Town of Marion, Silver Lake, West sixty-nine nineteen Silver Avenue. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve, Mr. Smith.
Mr. Peterman makes a motion to approve, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Sher, seconds. And George, your reasons for the motion to approve?
An unnecessary hardship is present and the current code requirements would be unnecessarily burdensome and prevent the applicant from using the property for a permitted use because very few alternative success. The impacts of construction are being minimized by mitigation. A minimal relaxation of the code would be that a permitted use is not possible on property without a very favorable. Uh, circumstances are beyond the control of the applicant and are unique to the property, not the applicant. The lot and home predate zoning regulations and the construction matches the lot and available area. The hardship, um, and unreasonable burdensome limitation of setbacks is due to unique physical features or, or limitations of property, not the circumstance of the applicant, uh, because placement of home prevents any future construction. The lot is very narrow and it's overall small lot size. The variance will not harm the public interest or neighboring land uses and damage the intent of the zoning code because this would make a bad situation better. The proposed use will not harm public, so, public zoning code or neighboring land uses if conditions are followed and the literal enforcement of the zoning code would be unnecessarily burdensome. Therefore, the requested, the variance, if approved, uh, the following conditions shall apply. The development must be in substantial compliance with the site plan and testimony provided at the public hearing. All other required setbacks must be complied with. All permits must be obtained, including land use to the building. Uh, prior to the issuance of a land use permit and, uh, for the proposed decking, the applicant shall verify to the county full compliance with all previously approved plans. The detached garage shall not be used for incidental and/or overflow living accommodations at any time. All code requirements must be complied with. It is the responsibility of the builder and landowner to protect the neighboring lots, lake and road during construction. Standard erosion control plans must be in place prior to construction, starting any future construction cannot occur without first obtaining a variance. The applicant will allow agents of Oshere County access to the property to ensure compliance with the terms of this decision, Oshere County codes and state and federal laws. The landowner is responsible for determining lot lines and required setbacks.
George, we have a motion, we have a second to approve, we'll take a roll call vote. Jess?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
John Sher?
Yeah.
John Benson?
Yes.
Chairman votes yes. Five to nothing, congratulations. Make sure you get in touch with the zoning office, clarify that garage issue and we have to find out about that deed.
I'll look into it.
Okay. Okay, that concludes those four. Now we have a little bit more here somewhere. Request for extensions of variance applications?
We have none.
Minor changes?
So we have one item, uh, before you, if you recall, last month, we approved the, uh, variance and the addition for the moose. Um, he, he has since come back with a request for what I consider to be a minor amendment to the previously approved public hearing, but he'd like to construct a ten-by-thirty-three covered porch under the proposed addition, which would be along the north side of the restaurant. Um, his drawing is attached there. If you recall, it would be kind of on the north side, the blank wall, um, covered porch. I will talk to him, go up, seeing if we can get him to just re-look at his plans to provide access out there because at the present time, covered porch has no access back into the building. But that's the request, uh, just a minor amendment.
Was that going to be concreted or just an overhead?
It, it would be concreted underneath there with, you know, I would imagine he said additional seating area plus, um, additional area when they have the tents and everything in the back, back there, it would just provide additional covered area.
I understand, but he's got in the way to get back there according to the plans we saw.
Yeah, and you can see there, yeah, he's got the bathroom and then the storage to the mechanical room. I think though that he can do some modifications, maybe shorten up his, he possibly shorten up and elongate that storage mechanical room and provide at least a hallway to get back there and a doorway.
Yeah.
I'd make a motion to approve the minor adjustment.
Is there a second?
I'm sorry, John.
Which one?
Which one?
With John? John, John and John? Yeah. Okay, we'll take a voice, all, all is in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion pass five to nothing.
Thank you, sir.
Next month, Jeff. Okay, what do we have? Okay, I'd like to thank you for doing all this paperwork. Everything was very organized, thank you very much. When I get four of them like this, I know it's a little complicated. Thank you. I thought I'd better word it for your, your voice. That's it, two for next month, anything else?
Yeah, the one thing I just wanted, I also included in your packet, um, it's the decision and order from Judge Hendy on the Julie DeBosch, um, the, her appeal of our decision, it was both, uh, my decision to grant early approval and use permit and then, um, the support of the appeal or, or support of my decision and then the appeal. Um, if you read through this, I think Judge Hendy, Hendy was very complimentary, uh, to the board, um, and obviously that affirmed the findings of not only the court of adjustment, but also my direction for granting the building permit. So just wanted to give that to you all for your records.
Well, that issue was, uh, did.
It is, yes. Well, she's, she has the option, she does have the option yet of, of appealing to the appellate court.
But there's a building there already.
Yes.
So, but she's a gun. That's good. And finally, it took a long time, but at least it verifies what we thought all along, so.
Did she accept this?
Todd, what's that?
Does she, does she accept this?
I have not heard anything. It's, um, when we had the, um, uh, Judge Hendy, we had a briefing a week ago and Julie DeBosch was not on the other end, it was just Ruth and I.
Okay. I was curious.
She was, she was invited. She was invited to attend.
If you want to pursue it, feel wanted.
Yeah.
Maybe a new plea.
That's all I've got.
Anything else on the board? Questions, comments? I'll accept the motion to adjourn. I would so move. Second?
Second.
Jess, second?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion pass. Have a good month.
I was gonna second it, but he always cuts me off, so I just left you.
Be nice together.
That's what happens when you're on the force of such visits.
Yeah.
We are.
Jesus Christ.
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 Jesus Christ.